I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, in whose name liberty and justice are.
Okay, well, I can't guess Julie if we have forum, but I can see we have forum and she will be here definitely. So can I state that we have forum? Okay, I just did that. Item number four, approve the agenda. Is there any change in sequence or removal of data?
No, there's not.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have announcements. And we shall do the student representative update. So you guys take your time to announce their wellness trends yet.
Okay, so first of all, FFVA Nationals was this month. So Pittsville had eight students attending. It looked like it was a lot of fun, although there was no place in Nationals. Everybody had just great Christmas Day brother and I would pledge those just a once. And obviously, our Pittsburgh volleyball made it by this year. We tied the conference champion. We were regional champs. We ended the season 28-8 and we lost in the sectional finals to Whupi Noma. And then we had a lot of all-conference winners as well. Just awesome to see.
And the boys' football also did great. They made it in playoffs. I think that's how that works. Overall, they were through eight and they made playoffs, but they lost to Ender, which was the one seed, so obviously. And then we had a lot of all-conferences for the boys as well.
Okay. Do you have any off the top of your head reports on cross-country? I believe we have a couple of students that made all-conference.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was Kalen and Phoenix made all-conference from across country. And it's not like your brother was in it. I would also tell you our cross-country squad is because I'm not a cross-country teacher. I don't have a runner's belt, right? Don't judge. But you have to have a certain number of kids. Like, we had a very strong team, but we were one person short on the girls' squad of having the potential of probably state-qualified came in conference. And just for lack of, that's one of the things we deal with. It was small school with lack of numbers, so they did extremely well.
I'll just add one, who was three seconds short for making state, so. Still very close, very competitive.
Yeah.
We know we actually choose.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And I know specifically with girls' cross-country, they're quite young.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So I think we have some excitement coming.
Yep, I think their goal is to maybe recruit a few more folks out and get a couple more kids out there.
Let them know which ones. Okay, any other questions for our student representatives? I have one. Is there anything special going on for the approaching Thanksgiving? Any service projects, anything like that, or anything as we approach Christmas?
So I'm also a vice president of the student council. So me and Rick were actually gonna need to talk about doing like last year did like a movie. Just like gonna see if there's anything we can make happen, even if it's just like a hot chocolate warm-up or something like that. We're gonna talk about that, probably for or for Christmas than basically.
Yeah, I know for Christmas, we always do a student council like funded trip to the movie theater and that's always really fun. Yeah, everybody.
So hopefully we think that happens again.
Girls, who sponsored the blood drive? Who worked on the blood drive?
That's student council.
Student council, too. Yeah, no, it's not your stuff, short. And I know also they fed the veterans today. They were responsible for middle school and high school.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Non. And to keep in mind.
Sometimes they're tired, they're tired.
Well, right, but like keep in mind all of those, all of those other things. You know, as well as service projects that take place. You know, like FCC LA will be helping with a hot chocolate hustle again. I know that Mr. Klein in the elementary school is gonna have a Christmas shop again. I don't know if during camp or pride time, students can volunteer for that. I know they always need volunteers to wrap presents.
That's what they do nice.
So, yeah, so keep those things in mind when you talk about what's going on.
Alright.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, real soon.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to agenda item number six, which is celebrations.
This is why I have a couple of celebrations with the part of my district administrator update slideshow. So if we could just cover them all.
We can do that. The consent agenda items. Item number seven, we have the leading notice certification, regular meeting minutes of October 14th, special meeting minutes of October 23rd, the financial status, resignations, retirements. Are there any questions related to the items on the consent agenda? Here in none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
How many motions to approve the consent agenda items?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any other, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item number eight, information-only items, the district administrator update.
So I sent all of you a copy. Should be able to pull it up in the computer. So today, obviously a very special day. Many of you know that Pittsville has a longstanding tradition that we honor our veterans. And today was no different. We, Leslie and Taylor and their staffs worked to bring some changes to the program. The biggest one being having it all together. So the whole, the whole school was together, all our younger students and older students. I thought you guys did a better job with the planning. I heard a lot of positive feedback from the veterans and their families. It's always nice to get everybody together in the gym to get all our students. But we had a great turnout. Student council supplied, well, FFVA did breakfast, if I remember.
FCC LA.
FCC LA did breakfast. And then after all, they had coffee and visited and then we did the ceremony. And then the student council and Pittsville Family Foods supplied chicken, baked chicken and pulled pork and some cheesy potatoes for lunch. And a good time to say goodbye all. So we have some photos up here. And my, my favorite part, and it always has been is when they play the branch songs and the veterans stand up. That gives me goosebumps every time I see them when we stand up for their branch songs. I love that part. But it's a great, great, great event and no one does it like Pittsville does to honor their veterans. So state report cards. Just circling back around on this because the public release, and I know everybody's got that, our time, their calendar waiting, right? Is next Wednesday is the public release of the report card. So that will be in all the newspapers. They will be publishing all that. The administration will be giving you at the December board meeting a comparative analysis of last year's report card versus this year's report card. Specifically, I'll address, one of the changes is they changed the cut scores this year with the state report card, meaning the proficiency rates, they lowered them statewide. Now, I say that because when I present our data, even with the cut rates lowered, our data, the trends in our data were positive with throwing that out the window because for some districts, they're going to achieve based upon those lower scores. We are not one of those districts. I can't share specific information. But part of the reason I want to have CISA come in January, they weren't available for the December meeting. They're going to several other school board meetings. They have their data specialists who do like a forensic analysis of your report card and then they compare you to like other districts in the CISA. They're gonna come in January and they're gonna give the board an unbiased breakdown of what does our data look like with those new proficiency rates? What are our growth scores? Because the big things we look at are proficiency rates or growth scores. Those are the two big things to look at. So that'll be coming here for the board, from me and the administrators in December. And then CISA will do a follow-up with their breakdown in January. So other celebration, the referendum last week obviously passed. And we know a lot of work was put in by a lot of folks to get the message out to all corners of the district, which is 371.6 square miles. And, you know, I think looking at the breakdown by towns and city voting, I think we were pleased in saying that it wasn't like, obviously, the city of Pittsville kind of carried the votes, right? But town share, there was, there were some very strong numbers from multiple towns, which I think says a lot about what we've always talked about is the towns here, where we are truly a district and a community with 14 towns is I think that everyone, what binds everyone together is the school district, right? And we couldn't be more appreciative of the voters approving the referendum. So those are the results. I want to go to the next slide. So I want to talk about next steps. So I want to be clear in my communication, which you'll see the communication drafted that we wanted to send out from the administration of the school board. This doesn't mean that we have a blank check here in the district. We're gonna continue being fiscally responsible as we have. And we're not automatically restoring all of those 10% cuts. We're gonna review and prioritize with staff before we make any decisions because there's still uncertainty this year. We still don't know how the year's gonna end up. So by the time the funds are released and payment's probably gonna be end of January, middle of January.
Well, January 20th will be a month there.
Right. So, so by that point, we're gonna be almost halfway through the school year. So what we're gonna ask staff to do is let's take a good hard look, sharpen the pencil up and say, you made it halfway through the school year. Can we do without this at this point? Because that's what we told the community we were gonna do is we're gonna continue to be fiscally responsible and we will do that. So professional development, the same thing is that there are certain conferences that I think where we look at prioritizing that are required for like certifications, like some folks have to go to trainings. Like Dan Jobs has to go to trainings to be recertified in areas as a building director. We're gonna prioritize those and then we're gonna take a look at those as we go through the rest of the year. So we're appreciative of this, but certainly this isn't looking at this as like a celebration to the point where now we have a blank check, but we're gonna continue to be responsible with these funds. So if you want to go to the next slide. So this communication, more or less thanking the community. I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at it, but we are truly grateful. We don't take this lightly that the community made a, made a decision to entrust the district with these funds when times are tight right now. And I think a great deal of it is, is that pride in the school district and that they have the confidence that they feel like we have been responsible and that we do a pretty good job here as far as the educational offerings that we give to kids for a district our size. So this is just more or less a thank you to the community and kind of talking about what this means moving forward. And it gives us, the main thing that gives us is clarity for the next four years is that now we know and we can continue to do the great things that we're doing already and without having to worry like where the funding is gonna come from. And then we're gonna continue to be vigilant about contacting our legislators and we're gonna ask our community members to do that. We'll talk about that later to look for alternative funding sources, as we've said. That's one of the board goals is to look for alternative funding sources. So we're gonna, we're so appreciative of the community for approving this, but we're not done yet. We're gonna keep doing these great things and we're gonna continue to look for other funding sources.
Questions for Jason? Okay, then let's go on to the state education convention coming up in January. It's important that the board leads by example. And Jason and I have chatted about foregoing that opportunity this year. And we'd like to hear another rule, I must have to say about that.
My thought would be it would save about approximately $5,000. And when we're talking about prioritizing funding to, you know, some of these other trainings, we felt like lead by example would be.
Yeah, I'm totally fine with it. And I also find that if we feel like something's gonna come up in that that's critical, someone's there, I'm fine paying for it myself, too. So either or, but I'm totally fine with the school not paying for it.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you. And then the last information item, item C, is the April 1st election notice. This will be published in the newspaper on the 21st. And it's just letting the world know that Chris and I are up for reelection. And I plan on running for reelection. I'm not sure what Chris's feelings are because we haven't talked. But yes, declaration of candidacy must be made to the district office by January 7th, 2025. And so if there's others in the community that are interested in running, that's the date. Anything else, Jason, related to that? Okay. Discussion action items. The first one is, item A is the board goals. Actually, board goal two. Okay, now this isn't what. Okay, I clicked on this, but the document I sent is not on here.
Deb, can we go to the website and pull up? The board goals are posted on the website and just pull up board goal number two off the website?
No.
See what you're talking about?
The one, the draft, the two-page draft.
Rick's got it.
The two-page draft would be in our email.
So why don't you send an email to Deb?
Okay, I have to admit, I just assumed that it was gonna be posted, so I never clicked on it. I apologize. And I don't know if people had an opportunity to review this draft ahead of time. Okay, are we bringing it up?
It was, I think it was just.
No, it wasn't. This came in the email, Deb? I don't know if Deb was on the email. My apologies for not double-checking this on the agenda to make sure that the draft document was included.
You sent it to us, you got it.
Did Deb get it? It should be. Her emails is best as mine.
Yeah. Well, while Deb is bringing it up, I'll make a few introductory comments. You know, we, we did set four goals. The first one was to educate the public on the financial facts of the referendum. That is a completed item. And the second goal that we chatted about a little bit at last month's meeting was the exploration of strategies for supplemental revenue development and to begin implementation of at least one strategy. And that's where we are. Board members, do you want to have the document?
When did you email it?
Jason emailed it.
Friday.
Friday.
And I just sent it to Deb.
Yeah.
Pretty sure.
Yeah. The idea was I was hoping people could take a look at it.
There it is.
There we go. At, there's goal two in bold. And then the strategies that we touched on at the last board meeting. Actually, seven of them are listed. Community partnerships, business partnerships, government partnerships. For example, billing Medicaid for certain services. Grants, both private and governmental. Number five, fundraising, asking the community for money through special events and appeals. Number six, naming rights. And number seven, establishment of an updated fund or funds in the Pittsville Education Foundation. What this draft document does is lay out a process for strategies one through five. And this would be a process that would really be done internally, implemented by Jason and his administrative team. So if they're seeing this for the first time. And those five strategies are the partnerships, the government partnerships, grants, and then the fundraising. And the mission of having an internal oversight funding group would be to gather information on needs, prioritize those needs, and identify specific strategies to fund each need. Proposing that, you know, consider having a teacher rep from each building meet five times per year. And try to place them here, end of the year, beginning of the year, and then end of each quarter. I guess that's the end of the year. And then gather data from teachers. Putting together just a simple form that they would fill out. Otherwise, people are, what I hear anecdotally is teachers will say, well, I think I'm gonna write a grant for this. It's like, I'm gonna write for $500. Well, you know, let's get this all together and put it into a format without being overly bureaucratic, but put it into a communication format. So there's Alabama. So there is also when things are successful, so we can report that back to the community, even if it's only 500 bucks from, I don't know, wherever. But to let the community know that the Pittsville School District is serious about looking at external revenue sources. Okay? Process for strategy number six, naming rights. This is something that I see being led by the Board of Education or by a board subcommittee due to major gift status. To name something, it should involve a major financial gift. And those things, I believe that there's value in the board being the lead on devising some of these things and reviewing some of these things. The first easy step is for the board to review and update the current naming rights policy that we have. And then I think based on that, you know, with feedback from administration, look at current and future naming right opportunities. This is one of these strategies that, you know, you don't just flip a switch and it happens. It's more like one of these ongoing relationship-building things, looking for opportunities both from business and community partners as well as what we have available within the district. The last piece on here, and then I'll have time for questions afterwards because I want to have you look at this whole thing all at once. Okay, strategy number seven, Pittsville Education Foundation. We currently have an education foundation. It is the vessel that holds the scholarship funds, okay? I, I think one of the early things to do is to meet with the community foundation in Marshfield, which holds the current funds. To chat with them a little bit about a structure of something, okay? We want to add to this. Next, I feel very strongly that we need to convene a steering committee that is made up not just of administration and Board of Education members, but at least a minimum of two key community members. If we want people to contribute to this, people have to have input into how it's structured. And then the steps I would see going through it, best reviewing best practices, determining mission, mission structure, determining mission and calendar. Concurrently, really consider having a formal alumni association. Not for, I hate to say formal alumni association, but at least more structure than just the Facebook groups that we have right now, which are very cool. But some other structure that links people back to the Pittsville School District website. Because the alumni of all ages are going to be some of the best potential givers to a foundation. And then finally, it's communication. So draft document. I, I'm not sure the community had an opportunity to review it ahead of time. There's a lot in here. I wanted to give you the whole big picture of possibilities. And just, it's a draft. And I don't get offended when people take drafts and slice and dice.
So our board goal was for us to focus on one, is that correct?
The board goal is to implement, begin implementation of at least one strategy.
Sure. So is the first maybe conversation with kind of this draft and the seven different areas to identify with maybe which one, like at least rank the top two, like these two are some areas. Like, I mean, they, everything that's here is great. It's also a lot. And so, and it doesn't mean that it isn't a five-year plan of like implementing more things. But thinking, and then from my perspective, it would be if it's more than one, it's kind of, is there an easy one on the, on the list? You know, so is there, you know, is there some early wins? And then, you know, maybe a second one that, you know, is a little more work and we can start to take some, some specific steps towards it. So, I mean, again, super, super appreciate. Because I, I guess even your process for strategies one through five, I mean, I think there's more than just establishing that group. I mean, I think that there are some very specific strategies around the areas of one through five. And I actually think that there are board members and other people in the community that could help brainstorm what some of those are. I mean, I don't think it's only Jason and the team's responsibility to think about like, what could even be in one through five?
Well, in one through five, are you, I'm sorry, are you dumb? Okay. You know, to me, the, the goal of one through five, and maybe I should have done a better job of this, it's really to get a handle on a whole bunch of disparate things that are going on right now, starting with priority, what are our needs? You know, what, what should we be looking for outside funding for? I mean, literacy is a huge one. So if, if we've got, you know, a number of teachers that have, well, I want 500 for this and I want 500 for that, you know, I mean, how can, how can we bring it together? And, and the whole thing of the business partnerships, community partnerships, yeah. That, this is the, this will be the first step is the prioritizing needs, getting teachers to share, this is what I need, this is what I think might be a funding source. I mean, it doesn't have to all be fully developed.
We might, but so some of it from my perspective, like if you're asking, what do I think is the easiest one we could start on right now and get going on? Would be grants. But that's from the outside, but you know, I've known, maybe we were tapping on the grant costs as we can already. I have, that I don't know. Because we know the idea of the grant writer position has come up. We have a discussion, but it might not be needed. Or maybe it could be something like 20 hours a week without benefits. Somebody that does it, maybe there's a grant writing class, the kids could write grants. I have like, I have no idea on that stuff. So I mean, things like that, I think would have, but it's not gonna be like a consistent amount of money, which is that, like, that's our biggest, you know, because like when you said like, you know, we have four years, it's like, I'm already ready.
Oh, I am too.
I think the biggest thing for like, like any, I think it's probably more than debatable is setting up, you know, a foundation, probably certainly than what we have. And sooner the better, so we get to a point where this foundation is maybe putting in $200,000 a year and it's better. Because we can just put money, we could take subject or answer check and go, twenty, right? So we could have the foundation we've got if we started getting the money in. Because you can't start withdrawing money, so you get a whole bunch of money in there in the first place. And I think it has to be separately from the scholarship.
Yes.
Like a complete separate thing. I mean, a little bit of reading on it, it's like, definitely a lawyer.
And you know, and and that's where I think we go into where getting the community input and finding out the mission, vision, and all of that. Because there are some school foundations that they have an endowment, but they also have kind of what would almost be considered an operating fund. So like, for example, if someone wants to donate two thousand dollars to the girls' basketball program, okay? It could go into the foundation, they can get the tax deduction for it if that's what they wanted. And it could be there, but it wouldn't have to go into the endowment.
Sure, or something like that would probably just could go into the fund we already have, right? I mean, if the intent of it is to give it and spend it. I mean, because donating to Pittsfield School is a tax deduction too, you don't have to donate to the foundation. But I mean, what we want to do is we want to give an opportunity that, because I love the district so much, I wanna write in my will that when I no longer here, that I would like a portion of my assets to be able to go back to the school, of which then, you know, when you have eight, nine million dollars in there, you are getting a check cut back to you for four to five hundred thousand dollars a year. That's just four percent off of the endowment. I don't think that, I don't know that we need, I don't know that this is, I don't know that we need to create something for money that's going to come in and out and spent because I think Pam already has that and that's a much better way.
Pam, what we wanted to say something.
May I comment? If you're looking to do a foundation, I think I understand Mary Ann's vision with it. It would be probably best to be its own nonprofit entity. Keep it separate from the school district altogether because our school district could not take in endowments and manage them like that every year. So like, our scholarship is a scholarship fund. It would be separate from a savings account to, you know, do special events or grants or whatever. So it's own special company of itself. And then the Pittsfield teachers or staff or admin could write grants to the foundation asking for whatever, flexible seating, whatever, new computers, you know, and then that's, then the foundation gets all those applications and then they fund this. I've got some really good examples outside of our school district, I've got other school districts that do it. That that would be the best way to do it in regards to like Julian, you know, if we get two thousand dollars in. In fact, we got eight thousand dollars in last year, fifty percent music department, fifty percent athletics. It went into general fund, was spent out as requested by the donor within the same year. Those types of things we can do easily within our group. Someone's going to bequeath us five hundred thousand dollars. That right there is either gonna have to go into a scholarship or we're gonna have to figure something else out because we can't receive all that money in in one year because it would really hurt general funding. I mean, Pam's is good, but we had to try and spend it all too in that same year. It would really mess up our educational general fund, like funding as far as the state was concerned.
Well, and that's why on the process for strategy seven is that pre-work and also reviewing best practices. So that's kind of baked into the cake here.
So so I wanna share a few thoughts, kinda what Nate and Julia talked about. So like one through five, we do these things, but they're standard and they're not organized right now. I have from the area for my former district of number seven. And what happened with that is, is a bunch of those, like the fundraising stuff, it all funnel through there. So we were able to kind of keep handling the submitted applications because like right now we have teachers doing GoFundMe. Donors choose all those things. It all went through that educational foundation and I, I can't remember if it was Nate or Julie that said that the big one is. You might get someone who wants to bequeath some of their stated right towards the district. And and I think that and number six would be two, I consider those to be low-hanging fruit that have a big payoff potential that could probably suck in some of those other things and streamline them a little bit better. That the the number six, I'm all for that. I I think that's kind of the day and age we're in right now when we have major donors and they wanna do naming rights. And the, uh, Mary Ann hit on, had the board needs to address the policy and set what parameters they're comfortable with. But I think that's something like, we've heard from some folks who would be interested in making some donations that would have an interest in naming rights. So to me, those two would be big payoff with with the work that would go into them and the potential for some some uh big payback.
I would be interested, I know Leslie and Danny and Taylor, you're seeing this for the first time. And you may not be ready to comment on it, but your thoughts about that strategy, the, a process pulling together just five times a year, tell teachers, if you want money, you better fill this out. And it's maybe three questions.
Can I just tell you once, one thing before you say that?
Yeah.
I think, I think there's a huge value in having a process. I would be very sad if we created a process and like there was no flexibility for people to, like, I mean, I think that I think that things can be more coordinated. I think that in that coordination, you also have opportunities to share the success better, right? Because you know what's going on in the district and when we hit that goal, that's great. But I also think that you lose out on opportunities that the reason you actually have them is because of the person who's maybe initiating them and what that looks like. And so I would just encourage that, well, I think there could be some really good value in some process and more of a coordinated effort. And even from, you know, the president of an organization that we bring in a million dollars every year in fundraising, grants, and distributions off our endowment, it is a huge part of who we are. And I can guarantee you, we're going into twenty twenty-five and there is a plan. I know exactly where that money's coming from and what our plan is. And I can also guarantee you, there will be things that pop up throughout the year that are just the right thing to do and we're gonna go do them. And I don't want anyone to be like, sorry, wasn't on the plan. Because you can never, you'll never know all of what opportunities might come into play. So I think that there's huge benefit in having some structure. And I think this is great to have that. But I just don't want it to paralyze a teacher from accessing, quite frankly, their their network of who they know that is willing to donate five dollars for the books that come into their classroom. Like I just, I would hate to see that we would be so strict, like I I think we could also go the other way. So I think that's my, just my two cents on it. I'm sorry, she asked you guys, not me.
No, that's okay. It gave us a little time to think.
You're welcome.
But I, just thinking about what you said, I agree with that because like you said, teachers know people. They have family members who wanna donate and and things like that. So yes, there should be a process in some sort, but there might be, and I don't know the whole um process currently, but like, is it really, okay. Like this money that teachers might be asking for, is it coming through the district funds or like extra fundraising or is it like the endowment? Do we know that yet? Well, we don't have an endowment. Okay, or not the, but like the the other funds. Well, it, I think after we build an endowment, I think having some of those funds available for a process. But um it, the, I I think the thought process behind that process is just to get a handle on it. I mean, and.
Yeah, like right now what it is is teachers make, like, I wanna get a set of books, they do, donors choose. Or they write a grant, like teachers become aware of grants. And I think there would be value in just even getting a list of those needs so that maybe there's multiple teachers that would be, you know, wanting to be a part of writing that grant or or just kind of getting a clearinghouse where we collect all these needs and the information and and put our heads together to look where other funding sources might be available. That's what we need to do.
Yeah, and there definitely are private foundations out there that that I'm familiar with. And and I think that others are probably familiar with. But if you don't know what's going on in everybody's brain, you can't share those resources.
I think too, if you, if I receive a parent phone call, like knowing what is going on and how, if there is a I don't even know what they're called, donors choose, like that's going on in a building, like, hey, I heard about this through Facebook or whatever, social media, like as the building principal or the building administrator, we should all have a process or they should get it approved, like, hey, if they get involved this, what's the next step after this? Like, so we all know because then we're not left in the dark or we kind of like, there's a process, right? There's a structure.
Bingo.
You do this first, this is the first step, and then this, that would be helpful. Because I'll be honest, I look at that, listen, I I'm, again, I'm very new to this, but I'm willing to learn and I'm willing to, but I, there has to be a process, otherwise people are just going all over the place and getting all this money. And where is that money going to and how and how does that work? So.
And how do you report that back to the community?
Sure, sure.
One one example, I can think of a concrete example was Pam, last year with the Paris. We we wanted to get our paraprofessionals trained. There was this wonderful training available in Wisconsin Dalsin, it was cost prohibitive, it wasn't budgeted. Associated Bank, you know, had, is their mission for their fundraising was equity in education as far as people access for students. So we reached out to Chad at Associated, they ended up funding. So we became aware of the need. If we hadn't known, we wouldn't have known to ask. Then we were able to connect with Associated, they covered all the costs for our parents to attend that training, which was fun. So it's just having that information in a, in a one place where we can explore opportunities to fund those potentially. A lot of times we do these things at silos and we we got a lot of folks who have a lot of resources.
Yeah, who would contact you, like her businesses? Like if I'm calling Associated, I might talk to Sally, but you talk to Chad and now it's back to four.
I don't know, seven.
I know, just give it a example. But you know what I'm saying, like if you call Stop Construction, for example, you need to talk to this guy, you know? Don't like, don't go through Sally and then John and then somebody else, right? Well, these contact people are gonna be super important.
Yeah, you know, another example that that happened this last year, Prairie Fire Children's Theater. They were blocked, but we didn't have the money for them. And so at the last minute, it's kind of like an appeal to the community. And I I'm not sure if those, I mean, it came, it worked out. But okay, what are we doing this next year for Prairie Fire Children's Theater? And having that ability by identifying needs to be maybe more planful.
Well, and different pots of, different pots of money and different strategies you have are for different reasons. So grants and and GoFundMes and whatever the others are that we're talking about, those are for a very specific task. And so when we put our budget together for your looking, moving forward, I think a great goal is, what are some of those asks? Not can't quite fund the second grade teacher, right? Like not operations, but what are the, you know, what are those things that make us, you know, an A, an A school? Those extra things that are needed that we could manage to get without, go without. But it's not good for our students, we want that and we want all of those things. Those are the perfect opportunities for all of the, at some level, kind of one-time money. And 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 it's very successful when you go that way because people know if I give you something, this happens, right? Like it's a this or that type thing. I think, so that's one strategy, I think, of kind of tackling, like, here are these needs. And here is like the whole list of ideas of kind of one-time money or things to tap into. Or even, you know, even the person in the community that's like, I'll give you five thousand dollars every year because I just love it. So it could even be ongoing, but that's what we're talking about. You know, then we have the big things, the other ones that are, how are we looking to invest in raised funds of which those funds or hopefully the four percent distribution off those funds would actually help build and start to structure us as a district that we, that literally that money, it's going to general operations.
Yeah.
Right? So I think, I think there's two things we're thinking about. We're thinking about new innovative projects or one-time things. And then we're also talking about, are we looking to build some revenue so that we actually have money that you're actually not applying for every year? It's actually to help the general operations because we want to pay our teachers more because we want to have excellent teachers that stay or we want to, you know, there could be all kinds of reasons to enhance your operational budget. And so those are some of the things that would go into more of that endowment. And besides just I pass away and I want to leave you something in my will. I mean, the other huge area to tap into is I have now retired and I have a requirement to take a distribution on my IRA every year. So that's just a huge one because I have to take it and get taxed on it or I can take it and just give it. And so that's just another really great way that you can kind of tap into some of those ages where just some natural things happen and that people have to, you know, dispose of some assets and resources.
This has been, I think, a really good conversation. I I'd like to kind of see if we can bring some things to fruition here. I'm gonna throw out an idea. For this first thing, this internal thing, the idea of identifying needs and, you know, putting things together in terms of what are, what are the needs and what are the dollar amounts internally? How about if we ask the building principals to work on that? To ask them to maybe, you know, put your hats together and come back with what you think would work. And you can include Jason and Danny too.
I'll throw what Julie sent too, because I think it's important that doesn't, you know, be a barrier to teachers. I could see that, probably, you know, kind of just being a way of those who use Facebook to put out a book. People donate, it's like a dollar or two dollars an offer scholastic and it's a big thing. It's, it happens before school starts every year. And I like the tier approach, I think that's kind of what we would work for. And the simple form piece on there is huge, simple is better. I think that would be helpful to guide teachers too, or anybody looking to get that. I've never been, I thought it was interesting that we don't offer gifts for the board to approve or to accept and that the board needs to, the board accepts the gifts that come in. So I think that there's a hand in understanding what's coming to the district for. And it's, I mean, it's good to see those partnerships.
We used to do that. We used to do that years ago and I don't know why it was stopped, totally have it stopped. When I was on the board before, we did that. And then when I came back.
We try to notify the board of donations, but there's no.
We we keep a list, there's a list of donations, is there not? Give me a drum to.
I do, I do donations and thank you letters. If I'm aware that there was a donation given, I do that so that whoever the person is giving it, it levels, it has a tax receipt.
I think there could be more donations occurring than maybe like now.
Like all fundraising things that's going on, that's the responsibility who's doing the fundraising because I don't get all of that information. And so whoever's doing the fundraising project, like the big ones we have going on right now with Lucy's garden, I don't know who all these people are, I don't know who's donating money, so that should, that should be on them to do. To these letting know or do it themselves.
Um, you know, one thing that I remember through the years, you know, the Pittsfield, the finance department periodically will say, oh, periodically will say, oh, we're raising funds for whatever, new breathing apparatus. And then like once a month, there'd be a thing in the newspaper that would just say, thank you to our most recent donors. And, you know, a lot of them, I'm assuming, were like 25 bucks or 50 bucks or, you know. But again, that whole thing of donor recognition is really, really important, whether it's a major gift or, you know, bunching together all those small. The, I think the feedback loop is really important. You know, one of the things that I heard going out and listening to the community when we talked about the referendum was this thing of, well, what are you guys doing? Why are you coming to the taxpayers all the time? And we need to show the community that there are, we're not just asking the taxpayers for everything, that there are other ways.
It'd be kind of cool, that's social media wise, if you have a breakdown of how much we received in every quarter through grants or, I don't know if that's possible, I could repost, but. I mean, I need people to know that there's money coming in from grants.
Yeah. Absolutely. It's that whole thing of communicating it, not keeping it under, not keeping it a secret. And that's where I think we need that organizational structure. I don't know, board members, what, what do you think about asking the MMT to come back with just some ideas by January? I realize that this is November and then there's December and things get busy.
Maybe a cease is coming in January, we could put it in February. I mean, from the organization, it doesn't mean we're not working on something else.
Right, right.
I mean, because the organizational, I mean, the truth is, is that they're putting something together to implement at school here. I mean, I mean, I mean, at least for a full process, right? I mean, people are, so it's, so that might, that might be a more realistic timeline.
And you want to know, like, where they have been receiving funds from also?
That could be fascinating. I think that would be helpful for youth folks.
Yeah.
I think it would be reasonable to Danny's point, and what was it, just to do a quarterly grant and donation report, the list of, Pam, what are your thoughts?
If I'm aware of them, but I'm, like I said, in the Lucy's Garden thing, I.
But that's what I'm saying.
I keep track of that.
With, with the administrators facilitating, like, collecting all this information. I think that's reasonable quarterly to make a report, share it out with the community that grant and alternative funding sources is what we're thinking of.
So.
So you have to make a, with the processes that we're going to follow? Is that what you're asking? I was reading this, so they asked, just to clarify right now, is, is that are we looking for a list of needs? Or things that have been done? What is it that the board wants us to, because yes, we can put something together, but. An inventory of what, what's coming in and being funded right now, and then what needs? I'm just going to throw out a need that I know, because I can do that in the district administrator.
Yes.
The playground.
Yes.
Playground at the elementary school needs, needs to be updated. It needs to be more accessible. It needs new equipment. And that is a significant cost. So that needs to be something that if we were to talk about, like, channeling resources, there is a finite amount of dollars available in a community our size. We have, we need to make sure that we're coordinating large fundraisers like that. But we have a fair amount of alumni spread throughout the state, the country that.
Yeah. And if you are focusing on, so if that's a need, that would be great. Because then there could be, who is the right group to come together to brainstorm about that? Because I can already tell you if you're willing to open it to the community and we create some stuff around the community. I know exactly who you should apply to, that you will get well over half of whatever it would cost. You know, so there's, so then I think, I think that that'll help. If we know what some of those needs are, then we can help to start brainstorming who might be the right people to come together to look at. Again, from a median means, because our other need in looking at this is building some potential long-term sustainability of if the state funding model doesn't change, in four years, we know, you know, we have a deficit that the taxpayers have.
Yeah, that's mostly, that's like a very diary, like we need that, we need one of the books or we need a playground appointment. And if, like, if the strategy becomes, let's just go ask everybody for it, and not let anyone tell them what we actually need. Need it. So, I was, like, I mean, I'm very interested in the processes because I understand the feel, everybody, every classroom of building needs this or that, or the other thing, you put it in the clearinghouse and you see it. What are one of the things we don't necessarily think you need, but we could get? Like, who's looking at that? Like, if it was like, oh, we could get a new stove for the kitchen. We don't need it because it didn't die yet, it might die next year because it's 35 years old. But it's not a need right now, but we could possibly get it or some more grant or whatever for it. Because that's like another, I think I want to be, like, make sure we're looking at all sorts of ways to generate money and not necessarily from the community. Because like, what Geraldine said, one of the Gaddens is like, well, he would not want his taxes raised, he'd rather give more money just, just to give it. Maybe, maybe, I don't think everybody's like that. The people that aren't like that, if they keep giving money, you know, eventually it's a point where you tap them. How close the, what was actually closer than that? He's thinking as a being, how close that is, I think if we're not generating money from outside of our direct district. Like if we're asking for alumni from the, wherever, or ask for all around to help with, you know, the foundation, if we can get that money, I mean, I think that's a better idea. But asking, you know, asking that every time we need something, um, to the people here.
That's, yeah, yeah. Yeah. But, you know, even with that, that internal group, and thanks for bringing up the playground, because there are things, it's like, what, I, because we, I, I've been hearing things about playground for two years now, but, but we can't seem to get off the dime. Well, maybe that's an overstatement. We can't seem to make forward progress, significant forward progress on it. Where if you had a, a, a process, again, a process to identify, what are some short-term things? I know a reading specialist wants these books that make a lot of sense. That's more like a short-term thing because a playground is going to be 40,000. Don't you think?
There's lots of bars behind 40,000.
Oh, okay, so 100,000, okay, so. Yeah, but see, if, if you have that internal process to identify what the goals are, then you can look at the business partnerships, you can bring in other people. Because to fund that playground, it's probably going to take all of those strategies together. But unless you have a plan, like you said, Julie, you know, you're just wringing your hands and saying, oh, we haven't made a headway on this, so. Okay. So, hope folks are okay with having our administrative staff come up with?
List of needs, and a list of donations, and grant-funded items.
Okay.
By February, I think we can do that.
Sounds good.
I would love us to look at number seven in the future too. I, I think that's where our answer is going to be for a lot of our bigger money needs. Because as you say, we, we really cannot keep tapping into our community. But we have so many people throughout the country who are alumni of Pittsfield who would love to donate to something where they see that their money's being donated. And I know people may think, to your point, like, well, you can donate to the school, but when there's a foundation, it's like it's a, it gives them that avenue of this is where, like, I think of that donation Pam mentioned. That alumni called, I remember the phone call. She said, I got where I am today because of my Pittsfield diploma. And I want to give that. You know, and there's a lot of folks like that all around the country that.
And most people who are looking to give any large sum is not interested in you spending their money. They're interested in you spending the interest off their money. And so that's why a foundation with very strong policies around what that foundation will do around that creates you to be a really strong opportunity for someone to donate to. Because, again, if you're donating $5,000, you probably don't have much of a care if you spend it tomorrow or where it goes. But if you donate, you know, $250,000 or $1.2 million or, you know, which, again, I mean, we've had donations like that, where, like, you care a lot about the fact that that lives forever and that there will always be your fund within the foundation that is distributing funds and it lives forever. And so those things are really important if you're trying to sell to people to leave their legacy to you. Small donations, people don't care. I mean, some people like care, but mostly don't care about. So I think that if the administration's going to look at some of that process for one through five, maybe by February, would it make sense if maybe a small subset of the board or some, like, would work maybe with Jason and Pam to like, who are some school districts that are doing this? What's out there? What does it look like?
They have some examples.
Right, not necessarily to create what it's going to be, but to do some education and exploring, and we can provide or share back in that same meeting, here are some different ways it's set up, here's some different things, so just to move it along.
Moving it along, I think is important. And having said that, I, you know, really the naming rights thing is, to me, it's kind of like, you know, a mouse in your pocket or something. It's like if there is.
That's a touch of something dry.
Oh, that's right, everybody's having mice, okay, okay. A candy bar in your pocket, okay. Where if, if, what it involves is us looking at the policy, discussing the policy, and then revising the policy. It's, it's a tool in the toolbox, that's what it is.
Well, and then, and then creating it as a high, right? So it's also just awareness that, did you know that, I mean, naming rights is going to be over time, right? It's not going to be like, oh, here's eight things that can get named, and let's go figure out eight things to name them.
Right.
But if we have a strong policy that we revise and we create it, what does it look like when someone's interested? Then we can capitalize on those opportunities as the opportunities arise.
Yes, well said.
And so maybe it's not a strategy of we're out there actually looking for people to put their name on it right now, but we're creating the, the vehicle for them to do that while we're exploring some of the others.
Sure, right.
What would the board like to do then with that, with the current, like, to, to visit the current policy? Would, do we want to put it on?
Um, okay, if we're going to do some other things in February, I'm wondering, would we be able to look, take a, not saying that we're going to do a first policy reading. I think first we have to look at the policy and discuss the current policy. Could we do that in December? Just to take a step next month?
Yes.
Okay. Just to bring it up and we'll have discussion on the current policy. Okay. In terms of the process for putting together an education foundation, how do we move, there's some interest in moving forward, I think there's a lot of interest in moving forward on that.
I would, I can't believe I'm volunteering myself for this right now, but I think, I like Julie's idea of a subset of the board and, and myself maybe look for some exemplars, we have some already. And then do a presentation to the rest of the board with kind of our findings and takeaways. I think that makes the most sense right now.
Okay. I would be interested in being on that subcommittee. And if we have two, if we have three people, we just post it. If we have that much interest.
Yeah, I'm interested in being.
So we have a subcommittee of the board? Yeah. And we post it, will we? Julie, are you interested?
Well, I mean, I don't need to, if others are, I mean, I can, but I can also give you maybe the information about our foundation if that's helpful.
That would be part of it.
I was actually a part of the development of it, so.
I also think you're volunteering Pam for stuff, but I think her business manager should be.
I absolutely, oh, yeah.
So then I would ask that, Jason asked Deb to use Survey Monkey, not Survey Monkey. Do it all, to set the time for us to meet maybe during the month of December. So we get our ducks in a row.
We're bringing it to the September board meeting?
No, bring it to the January.
February, yeah, February, yeah, okay, sorry. Got it, yeah, okay.
Well, this took a lot longer than I thought, but I think it's a great discussion. And I think this is important for our community to know that we are serious about moving forward on this. So, any other thoughts, comments? Okay. How long do the gals need to stay?
I would be okay with, with a policy reading. They have textbooks to study.
That's kind of what I was thinking, yeah, they have other things.
They were a target, I would say.
They're shivering over there because they're cold.
I know, they were covered up.
Hopefully you found this interesting.
Yes.
All right, here are our building goals for the 24, 25 school year. So we both have an academic goal and then a social-emotional learning goal. So high school students will participate in at least one rigorous course selection, whether that's a dual-credit, advanced placement, an honors course, or a level three class in their CTE program each year to guide their career readiness pathway upon graduation. And our social-emotional goal, which we have tall data for you. All students will participate in at least two activities, whether it's athletics, clubs, sports, or other organizations outside of, within the Pittsfield scholarship and/or their community by the end of the 24, 25 school year. So sometimes things are offered within school, but sometimes in their community. So we surveyed 157 students in the fall. And our school counselor, Marissa Peterson, sent out the survey. Forty-five students were involved in at least one extracurricular activity. Sixty-nine students were involved in at least, into our more extracurricular activities. And then forty-three students were involved in all extracurricular activities. When looking at that data, it was obviously great to have, but we could have probably worried our questions a little bit. Because I think they got confused if it wasn't involved in Pittsfield High School, that they pushed zero. So in the winter, when we send out the mid-year, we're going to tweak it a little bit and maybe define it in more simpler terms, because I think some kids got confused on that, so. So one of the questions that was asked on the survey is what kind of gets in the way of students participating in some sports rides? Obviously, there's not a lot of student drivers. Homework, a lot of kids like to work or take advanced classes. A hundred of the students that were surveyed said that nothing gets in the way. And when you look at the data, those are your kids that are taking already rigorous classes are, you know, taking, or three sport athletes are involved in the community or some type of club. So when we think about maybe advancing some of the things that we're already doing or trying to remove those barriers, you know, a hundred out of 159 students said that nothing gets in the way of participating. So there's plenty of opportunities that are offered here in Pittsfield. So here's a list of activities, I'm not going to read all of them, that the students are participating in, some of them are sports, some of them are clubs. 4H outside of school, you know, forensics, math club, after-school program, cross-country, National Society, SCA, etc. So lots of opportunities for students to be involved. cross-country, national honor society, SCA, Vayn, et cetera. So lots of opportunities for students to be involved. And then here's some activities that they wish were available. Um, some of them we have. Some of them, um, like our class, right, there's, um, empty goals going on right now that they could be doing in ceramics. So I think just to getting the word out there, um, I brought up to our building leadership team this month to put a list together of clubs. So like when we do offer our Panther, uh, I think it's Panther Pride Night? Panther Planning Night, Panther Planning Night in the spring, is putting a list together of clubs that are available. So students are getting into November and saying, well, I would really wanna join X, Y, and Z, and now it's too late to join. Or how do I join student council? Or what does that look like, you know? Um, I think we do a good job with our announcements, but I think just having an, an area where students can go to, hey, is, you know, is there a fishing club, you know? Um, or is there a fishing group that somebody would like to advise and, you know, they take them, you know, ice fishing or woy out fishing in the spring or the winter or, um, in the fall? Um, you know, is there a, an opportunity for others to join different languages? You know, we offer Spanish in building, but you know, is there someone that has some expertise in that area that could offer a club outside of what we already do? So, um, doing that as a building and I think as a new administrator coming in, you know, knowing what we do offer. So if a kid does ask me or a parent does ask me, you know, hey, my kid wants to join forensics, how do we join? Who's, who's the, who's the go-to person? Who's the person that I need to talk to? Um, so.
Taylor, were there kids that were identified as wanting to be in sport, but money maybe was something that...
Not, not a single person said money was a barrier.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't charge any sports fees here.
Okay.
Like, and, and if kids need help with equipment, yeah.
We charge sports fees.
Each team is, what?
We charge sports fees.
No, we don't.
We just pay twenty-five dollars to play basketball.
That's really good sports.
There's an option under to buy for a scholarship if you need it. The school does not charge any. Yeah, some, some larger school districts, it's, it's like a hundred and sixty dollars a sport to participate.
Headlines is going through like a non-discrimination report and then any foundation that's already set up, like they're consistent.
For sure.
So, I mean, seeing that list, there's some things on there that I just think there's an amazing opportunity to engage the community on. You know, when I see archery and fishing and trap shooting and, I mean, like, I mean, maybe in my household right now, there's.
Rodeo team.
But I mean, there's just, I mean, there's some really cool, like, I, I think that there could be some really cool ways to engage the community around some of that. That doesn't necessarily have to cost the district, but, and create some of those strong partnerships that could be really cool.
Taylor, maybe you can't answer this, but like, so an example would be like soccer. Like, we have a soccer club here in Tullamore. Actually, it has quite a few kids in. Was the inference they're saying they wish of school-sponsored soccer and the same thing like arts, like art classes?
Yeah.
Like the art classes piece?
No specific, but like what we find challenging, you know, and this goes back to the schedule conversation, but like sometimes scheduling, you know, art is only offered fourth block, but yes, there are also theater and music. So trying to figure out a way, um, to get them what they want, right? Or, you know, they can't, we have, we have the cat, we have the cat classes, you know? Maria Kuhn is one person. Um, so she does like advanced right now with big getting ceramics and then skinnies and switching during fourth block. Um, you know, trying to find a way where we can, you know, improve our scheduling, but also like offer these classes. So all kids, um, they don't have conflict is, is, is a challenge right now, but, um, we're working through it and we're getting some outside people to come in and help and really look at our schedule to see if there's a different way we could offer, a different time we could offer, because, um, yeah, it is a challenge. You know, we have some phenomenal art, artists in our building and like, you know, if, if drawing is only offered term one, where's the other opportunities for these kids to draw for? So be in order, big getting ceramics is just offered term two. Where can these other, you know, outstanding pupils, the great opportunity at school? But again, then it goes back to rides. It goes back to, oh, I have to ride the bus. I have to take care of my siblings. You know, so I don't know. I don't have a ready answer to that. Um, it's a great question. Um, but again, looking at our schedule and making sure that we are offering things at different times too, which would be beneficial, but again, so, yeah.
Okay, um, academic goal?
Yeah.
I love the academic goal of participation in at least one rigorous course selection each year. How, how would that work with freshmen?
Yeah, so we're putting, uh, there was a grad committee that was, um, that met last school year. Um, so we're kind of in the raw stages of getting that committee back together. We were gonna plan for October, but then a couple of teachers were out sick, a couple of parents couldn't make it. Um, so trying to get everybody, you know, back together, um, and re, relook at, you know, what was talked about, getting me up to speed on it. Um, but really, um, you know, there's elective courses that are offered for our freshmen, um, you know, with the graduation requirements that the state puts, um, in place. Um, you know, well, there, there are opportunities for kids to take electives, but I'll, I'll be honest, you know, looking at some freshman schedules, it's like math, English, science, social studies. You know, so they have to take these, you know, prereqs in order to get to an add-on biz, which would be a, a rigorous course, or in order to take AP Phi, you gotta take X, Y, and Z. So, um, you know, obviously, you know, the eighth grade opportunity where they could take, you know, maybe algebra one offerings in order to get to algebra two. Um, we're putting a list together right now with our teachers and again, it's brought, been brought up to be our building leadership team of what those courses look like in your area. So between A to FCS to, to manufacturing to science to, so. So all the areas are, are gonna be on one sheet and soon as we get those finalized, I'll, I'll bring it to the boards, um, to look at that, so. But then going back to that grad committee, you know, asking those parents, asking the students that are on that committee, asking teachers to, to really look at that and have a, uh, a really collaboration, um, conversation about, you know, what are we doing in Pittsville and how can we make it better?
Why, why I like that as a goal, academic goal for a high school is, number one, it's hard to find data that's apples to apples in a high school. Like when you look at ACT data, that's color data, right? It's, it's not the same group coming through. And I think this covers all, because there are students, no matter how much incentive we put on it, that the ACT is just like, they'll take it because I have to take it. But I like that this covers, you know, our CTE department. Like, everyone is gonna be able to get to that capstone course in those departments. So I, I think, uh, this, this is a good goal, academic goal for a high school. So.
And maybe even have conversations with students that are sophomores and they're like, I know my career path. I wanna be a teacher. Why do I have to wait till senior to be a TA? You're absolutely right. Why not? Get in a lot of, you can get in a lot of credit for it and go. I mean, we have an individual right now that's doing that in social studies. She's absolutely phenomenal. But getting those experiences before senior year or senior internships or to top shadow or whatever that might look like. But having those crucial conversations too with kids is like, what, what is your career path? Because some people know and some people have no idea. We are all over the board, but again, it goes back to, you know, why not? Why, why, why are we holding you till senior to take, to be a TA? Um, she's loving it. Um, her and her teacher are potentially gonna go to a history or social studies conference together. Just a really authentic, um, authentic experience. So really cool experience to see, but again, um, we're starting really raw here, so, um, gonna take some time.
I think that's my last slide.
Yes, okay. All right, and so now we're on to ours. And again, like she said, we have an academic goal and then we have a social emotional goal as well. So our building goal is by May, that all students will show at least a ten percent increase in growth on the Games Web Plus screener in both math and reading. So this is, has a little caveat because I don't know if the board was aware, but Games Web Plus struggled to get going at the beginning of the year because they became the state, um, screener for all of the Act Twenty, and they were overloaded. And so it took a long time, a lot of time from Jason, a lot of time from Michael. Um, I'm trying to make phone calls, just trying to get it set up for us. So eventually, second through eighth was able to complete the fall screener. K-one chose to do, um, some other screenings that they have done prior just because they could not get it up and ready, um, in time to get those screenings done. So moving on, we will have it ready and everybody, K-H, will take it in the, um, January, in the winter, and then we'll do it again in the spring. So K-one, their screener data might look a little bit different, um, different by the end of the, um, school year, but again, we still wanna see a ten percent increase from their scores that they took and we'll just take them from January, um, until spring. But the other grades will have from, um, the fall until, um, we take it in spring. But again, our big focus with the Act Twenty is in the reading part, but then also knowing that we just adopted Bridges last year. They're still learning. They're still implementing and still working on that, so we're hoping to see, um, that we can do that ten percent increase as well.
Leslie, if I may, a little longitude update. So for those not aware, Fast Bridge was our screener for math that we had adopted years ago. So when Games Web Plus was selected by the state, they do both math and reading, so the decision was made at the school here. There's such things over testing these kids, over screening them. So if you go down to this, what I really like about it, and we talked as a admin team, is, you know, talking about that apples to apples, you can look at growth data as these kids take this from first grade through eighth grade, where you can see that growth and it's really comparing apples to apples, so. Um, and we're, we're going to be saving money because we will not be using Fast Bridge moving forward. So that saves money on that screener because this will do both.
And then actually, we will work into doing some of our ADR assessments. We'll probably be going through Games Web Plus two. So again, then less testing, but we're still getting the same results and the same information that we needed, so.
And A-Plus is K-12.
Correct.
Could be K-12.
Could be K-12. Games Web Plus is available as K-12.
Yeah. All right, our social emotional goal. This was the same goal that they had last year, but they didn't reach it. And so when I talked with, um, our building leadership team, they wanted to continue this goal because again, we talked relationships are so important and we need that, um, for our students in order to be able to grow. So again, a hundred percent of students will report that they have at least one adult and one peer that they feel a connection to. And you don't know this lady, I love this. She's like, everybody needs a champion. So everybody needs an adult in their corner, but also, they also need a peer, so that they have a peer connection, that they have, um, an adult connection as well. And our counselor and our school social worker did surveys with our students and they had pictures of staff and students could circle who they felt like they had a connection with. And all of that data was shared out. So like, I received information, like these children had a connection with me. Classroom teachers, they received specifically what was about. And we had some students that they just circled all the adults, most of our little ones, um, just see people and they've seen them and so they've circled them. So we're working on, um, getting a little more accurate data. We did have some students, but it's not a huge enough, but in every grade level, there's probably about one student. Some had a little more that have no connection to either an adult or a peer. Mostly, it was the adult. Um, most of them had a peer that they were connected to, but even if those students had one or the other or they didn't have any, those would be our focus. Even if they only have one peer, then we want to grow. And they want, we want even more so that they have, um, a bigger connection to the staff. So again, they will do this again, um, in the end where they have the pictures and then circle. Um, our older students were able to do it online and then they could just click on it as well. But the younger's got to see actually, um, our pictures, so. But we hope that we're gonna meet this goal, and I shouldn't say we hope, we're going to meet this goal by the end of our school year because our student service team and then our, um, tier one and our tier two teams will take that information and say, okay, now this student does not have a connection with an adult. So you will be that person's adult or that, that child's adult and, um, doing things to help make that connection with them.
Leslie, I only have one complaint. I saw the list of people that feel a connection with me and two of my own children didn't list me. Just saying.
I, 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 it was anonymous, um, things.
They listed my wife.
You're not an adult, you're dad, but.
Yes.
She got listed.
Sorry, I was trying.
Okay. Any other questions for either of our principals? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the, um, building goals as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Is being moved and seconded to approve the building goals. Any other discussion or questions? Then on paper, signify at the same time. Abolished? Motion carried. Next, we have updates to policies. These are, um, the first readings, so we just.
I didn't have any, I mean, when I read through them, I didn't have anything that.
There was a.
I'm in favor of moving them forward to second reading.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Okay, item ten, legislative updates. Well.
Do you wanna talk about other legislatures first or do you wanna talk about you with this?
Yeah, I mean, come from our guys.
Right, we've done setting up meetings.
So we're, um, you know, as part of this conversation about looking at alternative funding sources, the other piece of that three-legged stool is we need to lobby the state to look at the funding formula. So we are planning on, uh, reaching out to our legislators again here to kinda walk through, kind of the dire situation, the situation that got us to this point. Um, and, uh, Mirhan, I don't know, I don't wanna steal your thunder, had talked about like, it's not only important that school personnel and board members are reaching out, taxpayers or community members need to do this, right? Like, and parents need to be reaching out is like helping with they, um, like a talking points type of.
He's stealing my thunder.
I know, I said, no, I'll stop. But, uh, but that's another piece of this discussion is we gotta continue our work lobbying, um, to get some changes implemented.
Yeah, educating.
Yeah.
Educating them. Yeah, in the, um, in the current issue of the school rules, way up the bat, under the Capitol watch, um, they have a really brief article about your legislators need to hear from you. And, um, one of the things is they, they do have the fall advocacy workshops coming up. There is an online version on Tuesday, November nineteenth, if anyone would be interested in tuning in. I'm pondering, uh, tuning in. We can do one registration. I believe it's like a six P M. Something like that. Um, one of the, one of the other things that I remember from a number of, of the community meetings that we did was question from, from people was, well, what's gonna happen in four years? You wanna do this in four years? What's gonna happen? Well, we're probably gonna be back. And other people that noted that, you know, this is a, it's a legislative problem. What, you know, what can we do? Well, I think people can do something about it. And as I stated in, in some of those things, it was, you know, usually the legislators hear from the professional lobbyists. They hear from school board members. They hear from school administrators. And I know for a fact that legis, some legislators think of that as, well, that's really self-serving. You know, I mean, they work for this entity. I really believe that what we're missing is regular folks. And I, you know, I, I really, I, I talked about that a little at, at some of the meetings, that what we could do is put together like just a one-page talking points or a sample letter that you could send or a sample email you could send to your legislators and personalize it to the Pittsville district.
Well, and I also think that a great opportunity that will be coming up in, uh, May, April, May? April? I, I'm kind of spacing on when they'll do it, but once the budget is put together, they'll have public.
Oh, yeah.
And, I mean, wouldn't it be cool if the one that was in this area, there were many? And, and when I say this area, the closest could be Rhonelander or the Dells. Like, I mean, it won't necessarily be right here, but wouldn't it be cool if many residents and, and taxpayers would go and we would share the message? I mean, and literally, the impact it would even have if everybody read the same thing. Like, I'm from Pittsville. This is how it's impacted. And, I mean, it's a big deal because I've been to a number of those, maybe not from the school related, but from. And, I mean, it's a big deal, because I've been to a number of those, maybe not from the school related, but from others. And, um, when the same message gets that over and, and that's joint finance that goes up to do that, which, you know, we no longer have someone representing us that's on joint finance.
Well, Patrick, so, so he's in, he's got a big portion of our school district.
Oh, he's still down Southern Park, he's just not, he's just not mine.
Not in Pittsville.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, but I was, actually, I was gonna say, but I think it's actually irrelevant, because.
He's in Dexter, kind of Dexter.
Oh, okay, great.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, yes, well, I was just gonna say, even if for some reason he wasn't, he's still a good ally, they should have a conversation with him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, he's still up, probably about thirty-three percent of our district.
Fantastic, yeah. So, um, so anyway, that's, that's one of the things that, a potential strategy we could use is, um, just educating our taxpayers, um, this is how you communicate this message.
I've heard that repeatedly at these committees, at the forums from folks, is what can I do?
Yeah.
What can I do?
Well, and at the public comment, it's time, they'll be hearing. But it's also the time to specifically send in. I mean, again, to be really cool, if we send hundreds of letters that share the same message.
We have that letter, you know, property taxes coming. Is that some people we want more? Yeah.
That's an interesting thought, thank you.
Good point, Mary.
Thank you, thank you for that. Um, yeah. So, we need to activate our community. We need to be more than just as board members or administrators. We need to activate regular people. So, so that's, that's all I have under that. Okay. Item number eleven, public comments. Doesn't look like we have anybody. Item number twelve, future agenda items.
Let me see the report cards on there.
Could you tell us a little bit about this? What, what do we actually have to do with this policy with reading and literacy development? What, like?
Leslie and Krista. Krista are working on it?
We're working on it currently. So, really, we're putting it together based off of, um, Act Twenty mostly, what we have to have in place. Um, you know, our timelines, um, our requirements, the dates and, and things like that we need to have. So, that is basically the, um, reading and literacy development.
Okay.
And then I think, we had already talked about the promotion and I think you have that one right now.
Yeah, I think there was just one spot we need.
One spot, okay, good, good, so, yes.
Okay.
And Krista will be a vet. Um, it needs to be completed with Act Twenty by mid-January, so our, our goal is to be, um, hopefully in December. If not, we still will be okay if we make it to the January one.
Okay. Okay, so. But it's a policy that would need two readings, right?
We can waive the second reading, I think.
Okay. Got it, just making sure.
Okay, yeah. And then that promotion and retention one, is that, does that also have the same date, due date? Yes. Okay, no, yes, because it goes with.
It's connected with it.
It goes up Act Twenty. Okay. And, um, the school, school department, they're coming in December?
No, I'm, I'm coming in December, they're coming in January.
That's it, okay. And district administrator evaluation, I believe it's January.
Before property taxes come up. Yes.
Okay. Anything else that we should put on here besides the things we talked about?
And on that note, I will submit to the board, by December, I will give a list of evidence again, so that that's ready for the board to review.
Yep. Sounds good. Anyone have anything else to put on here, besides the things we talked about previously related to supplemental funding? Okay, no. Item number thirteen, moving into closed session. The board will consider moving into closed session as per Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five current one current C. Roll call?
Please.
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Chris, accent. I'll make a motion to move it to closed session.
I'll favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion here. We shall move into closed session.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Are you trying to talk?
That would've been awkward.
That would've been awkward.
Yeah. Closed session.